This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 4:00 PM Tuesday, August the 6th, 2019 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools, and a non-voting ex-official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Schusner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Mr. Nessworkman?
Here.
Let's stand as we are able for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of agenda, this is an action item. Ms. Munoz, are there any changes?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Announcements and communication. School Board Committee, assignment updates. Fellow board members, any updates?
As part of the community engagement team in the school board, I attended two gatherings this last few weeks. One was a group looking at how we could better inform the community about Islam and especially the Islamophobia that has overtaken some, and it was a good discussion. I also attended an event at the Art Center dealing with mental illness and mental health, and it was an amazing instructional exhibit. I think it's going to be there for another few weeks, and it's something that I hope that most people in Rochester get to see. There was a discussion afterward about social isolationism, which is one element of mental illness, but it was just incredible, and I continue to be impressed with different organizations in this community that are so helpful in educating our community members.
Any other board members? Consent agenda. Does anyone want any item removed for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Munoz. Yes, we have one retirement, paraprofessional retirement. Julie Papaf...Papaf...Papafanthus?
Papanthus.
Papanthus. Thank you. Elementary pair at Jefferson Elementary School, retired effective May 31st, 2019, and she has been with the district for five years, so we thank you for...we thank her for her service to our district.
Next item is a briefing item, approval of a cooperative agreement. Ms. Munoz?
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Mark Queasly, Activities Director. Just to remind the board that we did have a meeting a few weeks ago with the director of the Catholic school system and their activities director, and this...what we bring for you tonight is a result of that conversation that we had with their leadership.
Good evening, board members. Mr. Barlow, Mr. Munoz, Ms. Edgar, and board members. Before you this evening is a cooperative agreement in Boys and Girls Lacrosse with Rochester's John Marshall and Lourdes High School. As Mr. Munoz said, on July 10th, we met with the Lourdes administration, he and I, and had a conversation about co-ops, and in particular, this co-op. I then met with the administrators of Lourdes, John Marshall, Century, and Mayo later that week, and on Friday, the 12th, we had a request from Lourdes for a cooperative agreement. Of course, we didn't have a request until that Friday, and so then we moved this forward as quickly as we could, taking into mind the eligibility of students. So, leading up to this, this evening, we already have preapproval from the Big Nine Conference. I already have approval from the Region One AA Committee, which were also part of this approval process. So if the board chooses to move forward with this agreement, then we have all the steps in place to make sure that we're ensuring the eligibility of these students. The priority is being Monday, August 12th, because those students are then locked in for the academic school year. So, as you see in your notes and from the Lourdes administration, Mr. Strickland, they are requesting a two-year cooperative agreement, which will not be renewed, in their words, and they will not offer Boys and Girls Lacrosse in the future, because in the youth program there is not participation there for them to offer that activity. So, again, those are the words from the Lourdes administration on this situation. So, at this time...
I will...I will emphasize too, in the conversation we had with them, they said that they would make a commitment to really communicate this, that it's only a two-year deal, and if it comes back at the end of those two years, it's...they are not going to be asking for another two years. So they said they would...last time they sent out a letter, they would go beyond that to really make sure they communicated and make their families aware, and we will have it as an expectation of our coach that they...that she communicates to families as well, especially during their PAC meetings they have at the beginning of the season. So, we're really going to emphasize and make families aware that this is only for two years, and it will not be renewed.
Thank you, Mr. Queasly. It is nice that the letter from the Lourdes Activities Director is a part of this packet, and the language of the letter that's come to us is very clear, indicating that it is a two-year, an honorably renewable agreement, and that students or players who will participate in the next two years will be required to sign a waiver. And I think this is well-written, appreciate your effort. And are there other comments from other board members? Director Workman?
Yes, I have a statement I would like to read. When we were in the thick of receiving emails and phone calls concerning the co-op, I watched the video from the original agreement. Although it was not explicitly stated, I inferred with little difficulty that all students currently in lacrosse at the time of that agreement would be allowed to play until graduation, and that no student from Lourdes would be admitted to the sport who would not be able to finish before graduation. Thus, a four-year agreement. I will not assign blame to any entity, but I am disappointed because of the communication failure, which has caused a great deal of stress and anxiety for the players, their parents, and their coaches. From the attached letter from Lourdes, quote, "Rochester Lourdes will require all players who register in the next two years to sign a waiver acknowledging that this cooperative agreement ends on June 30th, 2021. I would like to see a similar letter to JM lacrosse students so that they and their parents understand that Lourdes players will not participate past June 30th, 2021, even if there are not enough players from JM to field a team. I would expect this document to be signed by JM lacrosse players for both seasons. Although this might seem like micromanaging, I would like to see every agreement that is signed by every student and their parent to ensure that this situation will not occur again. I would also expect that no student will be allowed to play if the acknowledgement is not signed. It is not fair to those involved to go through this again because of insufficient communication. Inasmuch as this requires school board approval, the board has the oversight responsibility and authority for this agreement. Since this is a briefing item, although I understand perhaps you need this by next week, I still request that RPS administration, with consensus of the board, of course, if you are so inclined, to create a document for JM lacrosse players and their parents similar to the Lourdes letter so that there is absolutely no question about this two-year agreement. I will be exceedingly unhappy if this co-op agreement comes before the board again. The needs of the student come first, and clarity is imperative. We can and must do better." So we have the assurance of Lourdes, and I don't doubt that, but I think it needs to be clarified on both sides.
Director Marvin?
So, Director Workman, are you thinking that this isn't clear enough?
I think it's very clear for Lourdes students, because that letter goes to Lourdes parents and Lourdes students.
But what we're voting...what we have in front of us is clear that this is how it's going to...
I agree. It is clear in this document. I just want to make sure that this information is clearly and explicitly communicated to JM students and their parents so that they will not...we will not have this distress and anxiety that we had this fall from...from players on both sides. Now, if the superintendent would prefer to handle it in a different way, other than a written agreement, that's certainly up to him. I'm not going to tell him exactly how to do his job. I can't do that anyway, because I'm only a single board member. But it was just really not a good situation this spring, and I think we are all aware of it. I just want to make sure all the bases are covered for all players, not only from Lourdes, it looks like that side is taken care of, but so that JM parents and their students understand that Lourdes will not be joining their team in 2021.
Well, and I heard the superintendent say that both the John Marshall players and their coach would be told, no doubt, that this is how it was going to be, two years and then done. So, I feel confident that that's going to happen.
I guess I would say just having a signed document is no guarantee that you won't see it come back in two years, but as a board, if it does come back in two years, you can be pretty clear that we have no interest in entertaining it, it's done. I would hate to say here, if I had every parent sign, that I can guarantee you that the coach, or a player, or a parent might not come and ask for another two years.
Well, I don't think that's...
Let's give other board members an opportunity. Director Atkinson?
I feel uncomfortable with the statement that it won't come in front of us again. I think, as Director Workman said, what's best for the students is what we need to think of, and if circumstances change, who knows what it could be like in two years. So I hesitate to say it won't come before us. If there is a need on both sides to cooperate the way that it did at the beginning of this cooperative agreement, I would hesitate to lay down some kind of law and concrete that says you can no longer ask. I think that's up to Minnesota State High School League.
She interpreted my statement incorrectly.
Director Schusner?
Not yours.
I'm curious, because when we talked about this before, Mr. Queasly, you felt that things would be fine from a John Marshall point of view, and that's why we went down the path that we went down. And then, I guess I'd like to understand the change of heart from your point of view on this topic.
Well, even at that time, it was clear that that's what Lourdes wanted, but it was felt
differently from our side at that point.
I don't think our perspective has changed. Our number...we still believe the numbers are what they are. We were...had a conversation with their leadership, and working with them, basically, we left it in their court. We said if this is something, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail on their rationale that they used to determine the decision that they made, even though they were shared with us, we left it up to them at the end of that meeting, that if you want to, because it has to come from the district, it can't come from the coach, it can't come from a player, it can't come from a parent, and that's when they made the decision. They informed Mark that they are going to ask for two years only. I would, unless Mark, you disagree, I don't think our perspective has changed from back when we did the first recommendation. It's just, we're trying to work with them, we met with them, and they felt this would be a good solution, and we said, yeah, we can...we can support that.
I think the thing that we don't want to lose perspective on in this is, there was a lot of emotion. I'm not going to disagree with Ms. Workman on this, but we were waiting for Lourdes to make a decision, and our district was taking a lot of heat for not doing anything. We couldn't do anything, because there was no request in front of us to deal with. And so those were the conversations that we were talking with the Lourdes administration about, is, what do you want to do? What is your hope? How many students? They knew how many students, we knew how many students were going to be impacted by this. And the other piece that we're always trying to balance within our department is keeping varsity-level programs. Not necessarily, are they always going to be competitive? Yes, we want every one of our teams to be competitive. I'm not going to stand up here and deny it. I want every one of our kids to be winners in the classroom and on the playing surface. But in all of that, I think that also we lost that perspective, too, is, is this about numbers, or is this about wins and losses? And so there was a lot of different emotion in there, and I think what we finally landed on is what's in the best interest of those students who want to continue, that are stuck at Lourdes now...not stuck at Lourdes, but stuck in that situation where they don't have any place to go. And so what we were...four years ago, we said, at that time, the board with the Lourdes administration, let's take care of the kids that are locked in eligibility-wise from ninth grade on, and we wholeheartedly did that, and that's why it expired. And through this, again, through this entire process, we never had another proposal to deal with until the 12th of July, so...
Director Nathan?
So, on June 30th, 2021, this agreement will expire?
Yes.
And then what could possibly happen after that date?
Well, in front of you also is the dissolution tonight of this co-op. So you're agreeing to a two-year co-op, and then you're also agreeing that we're going to dissolve it in two years, because that's what the Lourdes administration wants. So that in two years, we are not having this, hopefully, discussion, because it will already be submitted to the High School League, just like we did the last time, four years ago. We put the package together so that everybody understood the beginning and the end dates. And again, Lourdes really is on board with this, and there was a ninth-grade student that we were kind of wondering what was going to happen. I've met with that family. That family has enrolled in Rochester Public Schools and is no longer a Lourdes student, so she will have the opportunity to participate in our school program. So, it's these juniors and seniors that we're really trying to take care of.
Okay. Director Seelinger?
Just a clarification on the letter, Mr. Queasly. Lourdes would like to accommodate a request from our current juniors and seniors to finish the high school careers. That does not mean, however, that a ninth-grader Lourdes student...
That is...
Right.
Thank you for pointing that out, because you are correct. We cannot have a co-op in place just for current students. It has to be open to every student at Lourdes High School, seven through 12. So that's the notification piece, that Lourdes administration has assured us that if they have another student that enrolls that's in ninth grade next spring, well, yeah, because it'd be ninth and 10th grade next spring, so...
So any...so any...any current Lourdes 10th-grade student playing lacrosse is now on...if this gets approved here and all the other entities, is on notice that they will not be playing lacrosse...
That is correct.
According to this agreement, their senior year.
That is correct. That is Lourdes' request.
Thank you.
Okay. Director Workman, then Schusner?
I would just like to clarify, the superintendent said a few minutes ago that having a signed agreement, you know, the parents will still...might still come forward and say whatever it is they would like to say that's not in line with that agreement. But back in my teaching days, which are a whole lot longer ago than they were a couple years ago, at the beginning of the school year, every parent had to sign my syllabus in which the concert dates were listed. I had those signatures on file, so that if a parent came back and said, "I didn't know about this," I had it in my hand to say, "Yes, you did," and I had a couple of parents who said, "Well, you know, I didn't read it. That's not my problem." That's...that's the only reason that I am requesting something in writing, just to make sure that everybody is on the same page and can be brought back to the same page, even if they forget. I mean, if you don't want to, I'm fine with that. It was...it's just a suggestion. Obviously, the coaches, you know, have control over their teams, and if they choose to use that kind of a mechanism, I suppose...
Director Atkinson?
Or not.
I think it's a reasonable request in light of the Lourdes students are being asked to. I don't know why the JM students wouldn't as well.
Director Nathan?
So, Mr. Queasly, you said that we are voting tonight on approving the co-op and then the dissolution of the co-op?
Yes.
Is that...is that where it says it's just the concluding June 2021?
Yes.
That indicates that we're voting on starting and ending?
Yep. It must be a minimum of two years, and mutual agreement between two schools can set the length of the co-op, and that's what Lourdes did, was just a minimum of two years.
So, I've given individual board members ample opportunity, not that we'll cut discussion off, but I have a few points I'd like to raise. And so much of the discussion evolves around our personal thoughts, and whereas there are governing guidelines in the form of MSH...MSHSL that basically establishes how cooperative agreements are initiated, and where we previously were a few months ago was a request to extend without a formal request.
Correct.
So, I appreciate you clarifying that for us. That formal request now, as before, is in the form of this letter from Lourdes, okay, which is fully compliant with the guidelines that the School League requires. You've already provided to us that it does pass their muster. You...
Yes.
Reference a Big Nine and Region One, and so if the board were to opt to move this to an action item this evening, the program, the agreement would be in effect for the next two years.
I think that's an important piece, is to have the Big Nine and the Region One AA. We are the three largest schools in the Big Nine Conference, and we still have schools in the conference that feel, why should Rochester co-op in anything? And so it was important to give you that data, that they're in support of this ahead of time, rather than you approve it, and I get two weeks down the road, and they're saying no, because they have a veto power in this as well, so does the region committee. Now, with all these steps in place, with the Lourdes administration being supportive of it, and if our board supports it, this will go to the Executive Director of the High School League, and it should be approved, because everything has been in place, so...
Okay, final round before...
I just think because of what both of you have just said, both school districts approve of this, this is what they want, so I'd like to move this to action.
Second.
Discussion. To move to action. Director Workman?
Oh, to move to action, no. No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. To move and second it to this become an action item, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to add Rochester Lourdes High School to a cooperative agreement with John Marshall for Boys and Girls Lacrosse for students in grades seven through 12, beginning in 2019, '20, academic school year and concluding June 30th, 2021.
Move to...move approval?
Second.
Don't we have discussion on this or not?
No, we don't.
Discussion. Director Nathan?
You said that you had, between the 10th and the 12th, spoken to the high schools and your athletic staff.
Yep.
I assume you've also talked to the JM lacrosse community, or have they been...
Mr. Urquhart has been in communication with his staff over there. With the month of July, how much that has taken place, I don't know, Board Member Nathan, but we wanted to, A, get this, and then make a statement tomorrow. If we move this forward, that's clear with Mrs. Nestler's help, to make sure that we send out a consistent message. And Lourdes is wanting us to do the same thing, that what we communicate is the same thing they're communicating tomorrow as well, so...
Director Workman?
I still feel that some people might not understand what my reasoning for this is. It doesn't have anything to do with the Minnesota State High School League rules, per se, or the board approval of this extension for two years, but simply as a vehicle for JM parents to really, truly understand this is done in two years. I don't care, however, that...how that is communicated, but it's really not a good public relations thing for parents when they misunderstand rightly or wrongly what the board decision has been. So, the only reason I voted to not move this to approval was, I wanted to make sure I had a chance to get my last two cents in.
Further discussion? Director Seelinger?
Thank you. As was mentioned in the last time we had this discussion at the board table, Ms. Workman and I were around for the original agreement that came before us in 2016, and although she did not mention it, and I will not speak for her, I will speak for my own...my own self, of course, and my frustration, that we put forward an agreement, we said it was going to sunset, and it has come before us again. So I do have some trepidation about voting to support this because of that reason, although we say that this is...the intention is that this will sunset, and that it will not come before us in 2021. We also don't know who will be at Lourdes administration in 2021, nor do we know who will be at our board table in our administration in 2021. So, I think that's part of the difficulty about being a board member. Sometimes we make decisions, and we think that they are done, sealed, signed, and never to come before us again, and sometimes they do, but that is the challenge that we face before us. So I'm just simply stating that I am slightly conflicted, but I have listened to my colleagues. I have listened to Superintendent and Mr. Queasly, who's having a choking fit. I have read the emails from our students who are participating, both from JM and Lourdes, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And, Mr. Queasly, it is true that within the School League guidelines, the language does exist for there being room for agreements to either be extended or requests for them to be reestablished. Is that correct?
Correct. There are some real straightforward guidelines with that. Number one, a school district can choose to eliminate a co-op without the approval of the other school if they give them one-year notice. Now, people don't like...our school districts don't like to do that with the relationships of each other, but I think the thing that also gets lost in this is, our parents, our students, and our coaches seem to think that they can bring co-op proposals forward, and I always say, "I need a letter from your school administration first, before we can even talk about it." And so I think that's the other piece, is I want to make sure that their administration is in support of it, because sometimes they're not in support of a cooperative agreement, so...
Or a request from parents and/or students.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Be ready to vote. Is there any to move...read the motion again? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Queasly. 7.02, approval of advertisement agreement. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Queasly will brief us on this agenda item as well.
Sorry, I got a chew on this throat lozenge here for some reason. I don't necessarily like to have this in my mouth when I'm trying to talk. Before you is an advertisement agreement with Ultra Federal Bank. They approached us in June, and we started the discussions. After a couple of meetings, back and forth with Mr. Munoz, the cabinet, Mr. Carlson, myself, and additional meetings with Ultra Federal and their leadership, before you tonight, is an agreement for the next four years in a district-wide advertisement sponsorship. This was our first go-around at trying to do something like this, the package as much as we could, together, district-wide. A couple of hurdles that we still will have is the outdoor scoreboard at Mayo and the indoor scoreboard at Mayo are not paid off yet, and they need to finish paying off those scoreboards before we can generate revenue. So we had to work around a couple of those items. But before you is a four-year agreement for $105,000 over the four years for signage in our gymnasiums, on our main scoreboard in our gymnasiums, banners at the entrance of our stadiums, video advertising... in our gymnasiums, banners at the entrance of our stadiums, video advertisement on the scoreboard at Mayo, indoor and outdoor, use of our trademark logos, four debit and credit cards, a community event for the fall and winter at each one of the three schools. We have not locked in what that will be yet. It could be a coaches versus cancer, it could be bring your daughter to a game, bring your son to a game, the mental health, a variety of topics that we're still working through with them. And then, an announcement before our games begin, just currently, we do that for the Mayo Clinic agreement that we have with the services provided, and then also access to our employee release that we do on a monthly basis to talk about the benefits of Ultra Federal Bank to our employees. So that is the proposal.
Mark, could you talk a bit about how we came up with the price range and what it would cost and how you guys, when we first started this?
We had the same price points, basically, for six years, and so we worked through some major scoreboard manufacturers that specialize in this type of advertisement, and those banners, those panels, and what they're worth in stadiums. And so they recommended the price points five, six years ago when we were starting, and then they said, "Now, over time, you need to increase those." And so we made sure we were on the same page in all three buildings with all new contracts that are going out, no matter where they're advertising, that those contracts will be consistent. And I think that's been helpful for us to have that updated dialogue. The panels on the indoor scoreboards are relatively the same size, within an inch to an inch and a half, basically, of each other on the main scoreboards. The side scoreboards in some of our gyms are a little bit smaller, therefore, the price point is less to advertise, or if you're looking directly at the major scoreboard, of course, that's going to be worth more dollars with that situation. And the same thing, we're trying to, with the signage on stadium fencing, we're trying to keep that uniform, so we don't have a fence line of large, small, large type situation. So we're controlling what size the banner is, not the vendor, and, yeah.
Questions from the board? Director Schlesner?
As we looked at something similar to this before for an elementary school, there's a lot of discussion at that point in time around state statutes. I just wanted to revisit that for a moment, because from our policy point of view, that particular endeavor seemed okay until Director Workman brought up that it would have been illegal by state statute to do what we're doing. So I just want to make crystal clear that what we have in policy is okay with state statute in this advertising space.
Yes, it, it is, from my understanding with this state statute. And normally, when I have these proposals, we'd give them to John or Mr. Munoz to take forward, and if they feel that we have to take it through legal counsel, they do that, and they vet that process. So this has always been done that way.
Yeah, I don't know if schools are exempt for in, in the gyms, but typically, your football stadiums are over 100 feet away from the schools, so that's why you can get away with that. I think the rationale, my understanding rationale for the statute is you want it further than 100 feet from the school, so people driving don't get distracted and run over kids walking to school. So, but the stadiums are over that 100 feet from the building, so that part is legal, and since they're in gyms, it's not a driving distraction.
Director Adamson?
So, not being as familiar as I could be with scoreboards, there's room for additional advertisements, or is this an exclusive type of thing, first come, first served?
This is not exclusive, no. There is space on our boards, internal, in all three of our high school gyms. It's, comes at a great time when we're either looking at a new three-year contract or a new four-year contract, and again, we're finding out that that's the recommendation, is that it's either three years or four years because of the economy piece. But yeah, we truly try and make sure that we're taking a very close look at that, that we have space. Now, at Century, as an example, I can add another tier of panels if we continue to have more advertisers come forward without disturbing the aesthetics of what's going on in the gym. Now, at John Marshall, when we install those, we put panels on both ends of the score, both ends of the gymnasium, and there is space on both ends, so the vendor can truly choose which end of the gym they want in that situation.
Director Workman?
I have a couple of questions. Mark, you were reading my mind a little bit. You've answered some of them, so. I know that's dangerous for both of us. So, according to policy, the advertising revenue will be divided equally among the three high schools. So what happens after that? Do they have a specific fund that they go into? Who determines how those funds are to be used?
Correct. Each one, every time we send out an invoice, the invoice will come back with the check, the district office will deposit it into three separate codes, one at Mayo, JM, and Century, and then the activity directors work on the needs within the department in their building to expend those dollars on a yearly basis. We currently try to spend that down every year and not bank it at all, just because there are some needs. As an example, last year, again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to chew on this thing to get it out of my mouth, game balls, supplies for our athletic trainers, things that would be used by a variety of programs, or activities that just don't have the revenue within their program, and we help out with additional busing, maybe for solo ensemble, if our large groups are going over to Oatana and we need additional busing. So it helps in a variety of ways for us.
I have a follow-up. So my follow-up question would be then, would the building administrator have the authority to, to bank those funds for four years? Like, if they're looking at, say, they've already done this at, at least through the high schools, buy a grand piano, which is certainly more expensive than $9,000, or some other large ticket item, or are they more encouraged to, I mean, you said they were encouraged to spend it down. My question is, could they not spend it down if they chose not to?
Yeah, we, we could. It would carry over on a yearly basis, but again, if we were to earmark something like that, I would like to make sure that we have those conversations with the administration down here to say, "Hey, at this school, they really want to purchase this big ticket item, and they want to save money for the next three years, and part of that's going to go towards that." I think that's open dialogue that we-
Okay.
Would have, yes.
Director Seehliger?
Thank you. I just want to clarify between, since we're talking about advertising, are we, are we truly just talking about logos?
No. We are allowing this business to use our logos for debit and credit cards.
Yeah, that's not, yes, I understand that. But like, in terms of the signage, is it just their logo as, like, we have a Mayo logo or a Pasquale's logo, or a-
Yeah, they, they choose what a business card basically would look like, and they send it to us in a, Heather, it's an EFP file-
Some kind of file.
Some kind of file, yes. And then that's what we generate those panels from.
Okay, thank you.
Director Nathan?
When you say that there's going to be video advertisement, is it just the logo recreated?
Correct. That's what's available on those two scoreboards. Now, that video industry is changing significantly on a yearly basis, and you're starting to see more and more of what I call Spotify advertisement, where it's that 10, 15 seconds of voice graphics and everything that'll roll through, and that could be a possibility down the road with some of these scoreboards that are out there on the market that high schools are starting to put in, so.
Director Workman?
So in number one E in the contract, it says use of trademark logos for credit debit cards for the three high schools. So is the school's logo on it as well, I'm assuming?
Mayo, John Marshall, and Century logos would be available to Ultra Federal Bank-
Members.
Bank-
Customers.
Customers, thank you, to choose if they wanted the logo for Century on there. They, they had talked about kind of starting a little marketing campaign of their own to see how many Mayo people would get a Mayo logo, and how many Century people, and just do something within their business to kind of promote school spirit for us, but, yeah.
I guess my real question is sort of a follow-up on Director Seehliger's question is, does this imply, is there any explicit or implicit endorsement of this particular advertising entity by the school district, when the school district logo is, or the high school logos are on the same piece of, of, well, credit card in this case?
I don't, no. I mean, you can, I was just in Target this weekend and saw all three of our high school T-shirts for sale with the school logos on. I think Shields has some. Just because they're using our logo doesn't say we, the district endorses Shields over anybody else, or this bank over anybody else.
I mean, a couple of years ago, I recall vaguely a conversation that we had about whether or not other entities were going to be able to use our trademarks and under what circumstances. So I don't, I have not been into Target or anywhere else to do back-to-school shopping. I wonder why. So I don't know if those shirts that they're selling, do they also have Target written on them as well as the school logo? Because that, I mean, that sort of makes a difference.
We actually, I don't know the name of the company. We have a company that if Shields or Walmart wants to sell our attire with our logos, they have to run, go through this company, and then we get part of, we get some money for that, for allowing that. Now, could there be a business in town that uses it without going through the process? There could be, but if we notice that, we reach out to this individual and say, "You have author, did you authorize such and such to use it?" And if they didn't, then they reach out to them and let them know they did, do what they're supposed to do.
Director Marvin?
I'd like to move this to action.
Second.
Any further discussion? I do have one final.
Been moved in second to move to action?
Discussion?
I'm moving to action, okay.
It's been moved in second that we move to action. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion. Mr. Queasly?
You've mentioned that there tends to be a three- or four-year contract cycle.
Yes.
And so is there an RFP? How are prospective vendors and/or entities made aware of opportunities?
We have never done a formal RFP on this type of a situation. Most of the time, it's by word of mouth and/or from parent, our booster organizations within our schools trying to help us promote these advertisement spaces, and so that's why I would say it's been basically word of mouth. So it's been interesting putting this big-picture one together for the very first time, and hopefully, now with this, we will have businesses within Rochester that, it's a partnership, and we want to make sure that in that partnership, we're, of course, receiving some benefits from, from this partnership, but what can we help them with, and, and not necessarily be exclusive, but just a good community partner, so.
So then that leads me to my next question that Mr. Carlson may have input regarding. That is, is there a dollar amount that we should, I know RFPs usually have to reach a certain threshold before, or cost must reach a certain threshold before we generate an RFP, and I'm curious, our current policy doesn't necessarily establish that. Would it be prudent, perhaps, on the part of the board to consider that, or if it's a non-issue, I'm good with it being a non-issue?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. So on expenditure type of RFPs, the, the limit we use is $175,000, so I would say we'd apply that same dollar threshold to our revenue side, 175.
Thank you. Additional discussion before revote? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the advertisement agreement between Rochester Public Schools and Ultra Federal Credit Union through June 20th, 2023.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Queasly.
I would briefly like to read a statement from Cheryl Dutton, the Vice President. She could not be here tonight, "But on behalf of Ultra Federal Credit Union, thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with Rochester Public Schools. During the 2018-19 school year, we reached 433 students as part of our financial education presentations in the classroom, and 235 of the students attended a reality fair. We are excited about this opportunity to bring products and services and financial literacy tools to the students and staff through this partnership." So again, they're elated about this opportunity, and thank you for supporting it.
Thank you. Seven point zero three, closed session. Board moved in closed session at 4:40.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision three, to make a motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving in closed session at 4:45 PM. This meeting is now called back into session at 5:38. Seven oh four, approval of second addendum to the purchase-
I'm moved to amend the agenda to add the following item, approval of second addendum to the purchase agreement for the purchase of land to construct a future school.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Munoz?
Actually, just need to read the resolutions, right?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the second addendum to the purchase agreement with Jerev's LLC.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 5:40.